7:00 PM, April 23rd. Study session for the Waverly City Council is called to order. Have the roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drankow.
Present.
Kangas.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Rothy.
Here.
Chair.
Present.
And Waldstein is absent.
Waldstein's absent. She's on a business trip somewhere. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda?
Do have one minor adjustment that Carla brought to our attention. Under the public hearing, item number one, we really don't have the appropriate motion to close that and enact on. So, we need to make the verbiage for Resolution 1869 kind of 1A, and then the verbiage for Resolution 1870 to be 1B, if I understood the right makeup that we needed.
Okay. So, we need to amend the agenda?
Yep.
Motion to amend the agenda?
I'll second the original motion and then make the motion to...
Friendly amendment? Second for the amendment?
I'll second.
All those in favor of adding the amendment, say yes?
Yes.
Now, approve the agenda as amended? Those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Hearing none. Approval of 6-0. Approval of the minutes from March 5th, 2018, and March 19th, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Entertained a motion?
I will move approval of the minutes for March 5th and March 19th.
Second.
Council discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Public hearing. We want to take care of the amendment part first.
I think we want the public hearing to take place first, and then...
Okay. Public hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed CDBG owner-occupied housing rehabilitation application. Is there any written comments, Carla?
No, sir, your honor.
I'll open it, the hearing, a public hearing up to whoever is here, and Jacob, is it? From CDBG is here, and...
I believe these may be in your council packets, but I'll pass them around as well. This is just a copy of the notes I have for tonight's public hearing. My name's Jacob Jaden. I'm a planner with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, or INTERCOG. We're the regional planning entity for this part of the state. So, our area covers Chickasaw County, Buchanan, Butler, Grundy, Black Hawk, and obviously Bramer. We've been working with the city on putting together an application for the Community Development Block Grant, that CDBG housing program. The program is, these are federal dollars originated from the HUD Housing and Urban Development. They're allocated to the state. At the state level, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, IEDA, administers those dollars in a variety of programs. The program that the city is looking at applying to tonight, and for this public hearing is for, is for the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program. The city is applying for, it's a total amount of up to $242,994. These are all would-be grant dollars. There's no required local match. They've changed the program over the last few years, and they took that out, and it's no longer a scoring criteria. The program's got very prescriptive in terms of these budget amounts. These are standard for all the applicants. You're maxed at six units per application, so these are, that's where these numbers come from. And there's a breakdown of how that $242,994 comes up with, with the various administrative fees, rehab costs, that $24,999 per six units. That's the actual dollar amount that spend on the improvement to the facility, or to the house. That number is capped via HUD regulations, so that's why it's kind of that weird number there. And then there's lead hazard reduction, and then temporary relocation. Those two items with the asterisks next to them, those would only be in the event that, if they're necessary, that through the course of the rehabilitation program, they do lead testing, identify lead paint. There's funds in there, though, to, there's funds in there to temporarily relocate that family or household, and then mitigate that lead. The project area, is this, I can...
Yes.
Okay. It's, I won't read the full, the full description, but generally, it's in the northwest part of town, just southwest of the Nestle factory here. See if you can get that. So, that highlighted area, that's the, the project location. So, that's the target that, if awarded, the, the potential applicants would come from. We do a target area, so that way, you know, since the program is only limited to six homes, if you, you know, just kind of do them here and there, you may not necessarily notice an impact. So, we try to, you know, focus on a target area community that has, you know, higher homeownership rates, because that's one of the requirements, older housing stock that could, you know, benefit from improvements. And then, like I said, in an area that, you know, is confined enough that you could potentially see, you know, that impact a little bit more.
Let's see. Jacob, can I interject here a second?
Yeah.
The reason we picked that area is because they wanted us to pick a smaller area than the entire area that's come out of the floodplain, and we're going to start doing that every year, try to do, pick another area, and move through that area that, that we can help. And we just had to arbitrarily start one end or the other, so we started on the north.
Let's see. Items I've left at the bottom there, plans to minimize displacement of persons and businesses to assess persons actually displaced. Like I said, obviously, since this is a homeowner program, there won't be any businesses displaced. But in the event that homeowners have to be temporarily displaced, that's what those funds are in there for. And then, the application will be submitted on or before May 4th, 2018. That's the application deadline. This is an annual program. We expect to probably hear awards hopefully in July. Haven't got a firm date on that yet, and so, you know, this fall would hopefully be able to, if awarded, get applica, get a contract signed to begin administering the program. There's one other item here. If you flip over the pages on the Community Development Housing Needs Assessment, as far as this process, we just go through and identify, you know, what potential projects exist in the city that the city, you know, down the road may be interested in pursuing CDBG funds for, to pursue those projects. So, what we identified here is essentially the, the types of projects that the state program could fund potentially, so to encapsulate everything that may come about. So, we have construct sanitary sewer infrastructure improvements, looping and improvements of water lines, housing rehabilitation of low-to-moder income persons, which is this program, providing adequate and affordable housing, and then providing job opportunities to low-to-moder income persons. Under plan of potential activities to address housing and community needs, we have 1, 2, 3 there. Seek funding through CDBG for sanitary sewer improvements. Seek CDBG funding for housing rehabilitation activities, and then work with city and economic development professionals to assist with other economic development activities. And I guess, I don't know if I said this right away, but so it's on the record, I will formally submit these as comments to be included into the minutes. And I also have some additional copies for the public, if they'd like to view those as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, otherwise, I'll sit down.
Jacob, I have a question, and just so I understand this. The amounts that you have listed as cost per, same as cost per house, are, those are maximums for each of the six properties that might be in this program? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, if you have one project where they don't have any lead hazard abatement, those, the monies that are in the budget for that simply wouldn't be spent?
Correct.
Would the grant money would go back to the government, or whatever? What happened to it?
Yeah, for, yeah, for the lead expenses, those are only in there in the event of that they're required. But, yeah, so the, the general administration, that's, you know, would cover all the units, and that, that IEDA requires that you have a general administrator, a technical assistance administrator. The general does things like contracts, compliance with the federal regulations, environmental review, and then the technical services, that's actually the individual houses in those projects, so that's doing the inspections, actually bidding those, doing the post-inspections, things like that.
So, this isn't like one big pot of $242,000? This is really six pots of whatever that amount would be?
Yeah, yeah, and then again, those are the numbers that is kind of prescriptive, in that it's the state, you know, decides what those caps are.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And again, I think we've talked about this before, but for a homeowner, if they would be interested in this, there is no cost to them other than their time to fill out the application, go through the process. It's a forgivable loan, for lack of better label to put on it, that if they stay in the house long enough, the $24,000 would be forgiven, so there's no payback, those type of things.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Jacob? Anyone else here wish to speak to this item on its public hearing? Hearing seeing none, a close to public hearing. Further, entertain a motion?
I would move Resolution 1869, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments for technical service administration of the community development contract with the Iowa Economic Development Authority.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drankow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein? Oh, she's absent. Gosh. Bergen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0, one absent. Item 1A, approving Resolution 1870, resolution approving a community development block grant application, designating the mayor as the official representative of the city, and authorizing the mayor to affix their signature to set application and certain assurances in conjunction with the same. Entertain a motion?
I would move Resolution 1870. It's read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion?
Again, I just think this is a great program. Hopefully, there are folks out there, and I think there's a process to notify residents that live in this area by mail, so I just hope they understand that it is a great program, no cost to them other than their time, and that we get more than six applications for it, so. We have some applications, so people are interested, but we need more information, more surveys, more apps.
Just for my curiosity, whose ward is this in? I'm just, is it Ward 2, Ward 10? It's on you.
Yes.
Get out there and spread the word.
Now, I have a question. Application deadline says May 4th. Is that the city's application, or the individual homeowners?
Both are. So, that's the, the city's application, that we'll actually submit it to IEDA. The pre-applications that those packets were sent to homeowners, I didn't send those out, so I'm not exactly sure what the due date is on those, but I know the city is still getting some, we just got some more today, so. And those are, you know, just the pre-applications that, you know, in the event that it does get funded, and we have a pool of applicants to potentially draw from.
Very good.
I know we had people going door-to-door, and actually asking people to do it, so hopefully we'll get everybody contacted as much as possible.
Very good. Thank you.
I guess I have one question I didn't think of before. What, what happens if we don't have six applicants?
We can just submit for the ones we have.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. One, two. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Deal with...
We did that as the...
We did that, okay. Very good, thank you. Public comments for any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none? We'll move on to study session calendar. Historic Preservation Commission update to the council.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring this update on behalf of the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission. Your appointed commissioners are a passionate and very dedicated group. The current members are our chairperson, Don Meyer, who is traveling for work tonight, Chris Brunkhorst, Peter Newell, who's with us over here, and Mary Meyer, Linda Hubden, Glenn Fenneman, and our vice chair, me, Karen Lehman. We have liaisons with the city through Bellweger, and with the council through Brian Bergen. Our Waverly Commission is part of the Certified Local Government Program, the CLG. It partners us with the State Historic Preservation Office, and it helps us further the goals of preserving and increasing awareness of irreplaceable historic character in our communities. I like how they put that. Our commission recently filed our annual report that we do every year, and one of the things that's part of that report is people on the commission must attend conferences or workshops on an annual basis. Not everyone, but at least one. Fun fact, by the way, Iowa has the largest CLG program in the country. There are more than 90 cities and counties that participate. I just discovered that when I was looking up things for this meeting, and thought that was, that, kudos to Iowa. And that leads into the number one highlight that we would like to share tonight. The last update we did was October 2017, and obviously, things continue to happen with this commission. For the first time ever, the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions will be holding their national meeting in Des Moines. That's going to be July 18 to '22. It's called Forum 2018, and it will take the place of the state conference that they normally have, because obviously, a national conference trumps that. And some of us generally attend the state conference, and because our commission received a grant to cover two registrations in housing, at least two of us will be attending. And we also are hoping that a third free registration will be provided if we win an award that we applied for, which is called an excellence award. It would be a great honor if we received it. We thought we'd know by now, but we still don't know, so we're waiting to find out if we got that award, but what it involved, what we applied for, was in the area of public outreach and advocacy. We sort of figured that after our multi-year process of developing four historic districts, and adding signage, and hosting celebration parties for every one of them, such as the one in the southwest Sturdivant District last summer, and holding that in conjunction with heritage days, and doing things like doing a historic preservation award locally, and getting some other things onto national historic registers, that we had a lot we could say for that award, so we did. And we are also trying to put those things on our website. We're working very hard to update our website and get current links. We know we have a ways to go, but that's definitely a priority for the commission. I gave you a brochure, just to remind you of the types of brochures that we've been doing, and I suppose I could put these on here. Spell line, yes it is, okay, we got that, and there's the brochure. We have them for each of the historic districts, the four that we have, and we've, have goals to continue producing materials like this to encourage people to be excited about historic preservation. I love the signs, by the way, and I know we've talked about that at these meetings before. I do want to give special thanks to Paige Yoder, because she's the Economic Development Office manager, and she has been working hard on the technical side of our website. Okay, an exciting thing, May is his National Historic Preservation Month. That's coming very fast. And our commission just met tonight, and talked about, we brainstormed some ideas for this year, because we don't have another party, we've done all those, so we talked about the possibility of a proclamation by the mayor, as has happened some other years, and we'll give you an example of past ones. We would like to encourage anyone who's listening to this to apply for a Waverly Historic Preservation Award, which is described very, all the criteria on our website, but basically, it's an award given to your home for the exterior upkeep of, in a historically appropriate manner. So, please look at that if that sounds like your house might qualify. We are also talking about working with the Waverly Public Library, because they have our file of old photos that they don't know who is in them, so we're going to try to tie preservation together with identify this photo, and perhaps ask our local newspaper to run some things during May about that. So, that could be a fun Historic Preservation Month activity. The commissioners have been very pleased to be represented on the planning committee for the development of the South Riverside Park Project. The Farmers Exchange has actually been recognized and put on the Waverly Historic Register, and that's going to be a part of that park, so we appreciate the opportunity to be involved in that. We also thank the city for their help in placing the Green Bridge on the National Register of Historic Places. Some may wonder why we've placed it on a national register, if it could possibly be torn down, so we want to make sure everyone understands, the main purpose of a national register placement is to create a permanent record that documents the history of the structure, and I think we would all agree that that is a great idea. It's a lasting remembrance of how that bridge has served our community for over 100 years, regardless of what happens to it. We'll always have a record. It will be on file with the State Historical Society Office. It will be on file with the National Park Service, who maintains an online presence of all the applications. There will be links to that on our website, and there'll be physical copies of all this information at the Waverly Public Library. So, that's what's happening with the Green Bridge, and we're hoping we'll hear in May that the final acceptance has been given to that project. We're also exploring if it makes sense to preserve something of that bridge in some way. Perhaps a span or a piece can be placed in a park, or can be made into a statue, or some kind of something, and so that could be a future recommendation coming from the commission. We would like to clarify that the Historic Preservation Commission does not distribute grants to organizations. That is not our function. We can direct owners of historic properties to funding opportunities. We can help link them to appropriate information on tax benefits, but our mission is to recognize and promote historic preservation in our community. Regarding the national historic districts, Waverly's blessed to have four of them, and also to have several individual buildings and structures that are on the National Historic Register, and that, once again, is through the National Park Service. We're looking into potential funding for a project that would bring us full circle, because as you realize, we've got the southeast, the northeast, the northwest, the commercial district downtown, but nothing in that missing quadrant, the northeast, which has some fine homes. The nomination process, if we move forward with this, it involves getting an architectural historian to actually compose the nomination and to research it, and in the past, FEMA funded that, because we lost historic properties in the flood of 2008. We hope that we, we believe we have found an expert who can do a preliminary idea to let us know which houses might be eligible or contributing to having a historic district there. There's no point in getting too concerned about it until we know actually what part of it, how many homes, where it would be, et cetera, et cetera. So, we have found someone to do some very basic, and she actually has ties to family in Waverly on that preliminary work, so that's an exciting thing we're hoping to do within the next year. And then, if we would move forward after that, there really is not a timetable on this, and it would involve significant, more significant funds, so we would need to look at grants, or some way to raise funds, or perhaps benefactors who want to see this happen, or something of that nature, so that's, that's ongoing. And then finally, at the suggestion of Mayor Soash, who attended one of our recent meetings, we are looking into ways of highlighting historic properties about town, continuing to build on what we have with the brochures. He had suggested the idea for a book of some type, and we are looking into that further, and then, of course, there are walking and driving brochures, and many, many other things. For example, we have concrete block houses in this town all over the place, which are a very interesting and unique feature based on a business that was here at one point. So, historic tourism has economic benefits. It can, and it is a way to feature historic properties in Waverly. So, our commission continues to encourage people here and beyond this town to appreciate our historic heritage. Any questions?
Karen, how old does a house have to be before we can call it historic?
50 years. So, actually, if we would get the quadrant completed, you know, when you think about up by the high school, or over by North Cedar School, there's some interesting neighborhoods that would qualify as well, that are in the newer range. I mean, we think of really old houses, but 50 years. Limited only by funding. Well, thank you.
Very good, thank you, for a very good report, so. Moving on to item number two, study session calendar, review of the District 1 sidewalk infill program. James, would you like to kick that off, please?
Yes, sir. I'll give you kind of a brief synopsis of what we're looking at, and then if there's any additional detail, I might kind of run this through it as well, but we've been kind of talking about the infill program, and I know it's been discussed a few times with council, and there's been some discussions to whether or not we should have a certain area designated where any missing pieces are put in, or should we be looking at prioritizing it somehow, or a larger scale of, you know, we maybe need a sidewalk from here to here, you know, is that how we should allocate our funding? So, that being the case, we're kind of looking at maybe holding off on doing this for a year, maybe letting it go through strategic planning, seeing what the council's priorities are at that point, and then determining how should we move forward with a sidewalk infill program of some sort, not necessarily what we have done or talked about in the past, where a district is just given areas that are open needing to be filled. And so, kind of very briefly, that's, that's what the memo is in front of you that we're looking through. If you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. If not, I know Mike can answer them, but that's kind of the gist of what is being presented here.
Okay, any questions? Discussion from the council?
I have a question. So, are you thinking about doing this in alignment with strategic planning, to look at the entire city as a whole, and where we have gaps in walkways, or still focusing on a district-to-district?
I think it's kind of whatever you'd like to do, honestly. You know, we've thought about prioritizing certain areas that have more traffic, and maybe there's a gap that needs to be addressed there, or is there a sidewalk to a school that isn't there that should be, or is there an area around a recreational area that we have trails but not a good sidewalk to connect them? And so, it can be citywide, it can be district-wide, which has worked very well, so people know when it's coming to their area, but we just kind of wanted to pull back a little bit and let the community determine as well, do they really want sidewalk connectivity to be a large focus, or is this something there's little interest in, or they're going to leave it to council, just to kind of give a little more input, because it is... to leave it to council, just to kind of give a little more input, because it is potentially a costly item to go through, you know, as we've seen, things don't get cheaper by any means. So, when you start talking concrete, amount of footage and distance, some of these could add up to be substantial, and do you allocate a certain amount of money, and then peel off of that however much you can get done? Or, do you look at a certain project and we have to get this done, and this is what it costs? But it gives you a better chance to be able to budget a little bit as well, and to kind of figure out where's the best place to pay for it for, because right now we don't have a very good funding source to accomplish this other than through the budget itself, so.
Was there anything in particular that happened between the meeting where we discussed it and today?
Um, Mike, give me a comment as far as that, I know it's something we've talked about, but.
I was getting ready to drive around once the snow melted, looking at sidewalks.
I actually did that this afternoon, checking out sidewalks, so.
Well, that was part of it, that we were, our schedule-wise is kind of getting pushed back, and then when we started following the council meeting and starting to, you know, take a closer look at it and start to identify the potential costs and, you know, revenues, or is there cost sharing, and then, are we going to be able to put a schedule together that gives the property owners adequate notice? And we were starting to see that this was going to have the feel of it being very rushed. Additionally, I'm down, I'm down a employee right now. They'll be back hopefully in two to three weeks on light duty, but it was just, upon closer examination, we think a slower approach would be better. Eight years ago, the council at that time made the decision to go forward with repairing and maintaining our existing sidewalks, knowing that a future council would really need to be the council that sits down and decides, do we proceed forward with an infill program or not? They left it up to a future council to make that decision, and we think you need to have that opportunity, and the community needs to have that opportunity for thoughtful discussion.
I'm good with this idea of taking a look, because I know with the districts we have in the various additions that we've had throughout town, some came in after we had sidewalks mandated in the, in the districts, and some of the additions, and some were built or added before we had requirements for sidewalks, so we do have areas of town that's kind of patchwork, whether there is or isn't, and I like the idea of kind of, let's prioritize what are the areas, what are the places we want sidewalks to go to, for sure. That'll be an easier sell to the public than to just say, we're going through and slapping sidewalks in, or if we could be able to say, recreation, schools, you know, what are those connectivity issues specifically, why we're doing this sidewalk here as opposed to just saying, we're going this district and we're going in gaps.
Yeah, I guess after our last conversation, that's kind of where I landed when I saw the topic. To me, we already have an infill program that we revisit every two years, and that was really to infill sidewalks that were mandated. To me, what this is really pivoting to is a connectivity project, and I don't know that we've had enough discussions to say, what are we trying to connect? I know there was some effort to look at schools and safe paths to school, I'm not really sure what has been accomplished there, so that may be a starting point just to review that. And then again, as Tim said, if we can say we want sidewalks here because it's moving you from activity to activity, I think that's going to be easier for people to understand, plus naturally allows us to kind of fine tune where we think we would ask to put these on private property and those type of things. So, I don't know if naming conventions would help where we stay with the infill program that's filling in what wasn't there that was mandated and moved to more of a connectivity program, or some other naming convention could help with selling it to the public, that type of thing.
Absolutely, and I know there's even federal funds for some connectivity programs, such as the Pass the School, et cetera, but it allows us to look into that as well, what other kind of funding sources could occur instead of just obviously being property tax, so.
Okay, any other questions, discussion?
Just in the interest of time, I'll just say I agree with everything that's been said. I don't have any problem with putting this up with part of the strategic planning sessions, I think that's a very good idea. This isn't something that is, is time sensitive. There's not a huge human cry for people asking us to make a decision on this right now, and I haven't really heard too many people asking about this period, not like it was eight years ago with the sidewalk repair program where there are a lot of people vocally asking for that. So, I think that we want to take some time and just see how this is going to affect people, so I'd agree with what everyone's been saying.
As I drove around a week or so ago after the discussion, why there's some out there that are on the list that would be a real challenge.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, I think, I think the decision, it's, you know, step back and take a harder look at the whole thing is probably a wise move.
Let me just say, Mr. Mayor, I think I went everybody one better, I spent about an hour and a half last night walking around through that district and checking off all the sidewalks, so. And I, I was almost at the end of my route before I figured out Mike's method of numbering the blocks, so I did a lot of backtracking.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, review draft of new fireworks ordinance and display application. Anyone care to kick that off?
I'd really rather not, but.
I can start if you want me to.
Okay.
I did draft the ordinance largely borrowing from the state law, so that I could really stay within the confines of the definitions and things that are used under the state law. I put some suggestions in for uses. It's already been pointed out, and I think it's a good idea that the, under section 4A, I would probably put 3, 4, and 5 as subsections of number 1, so that it pertains to that time period. Now, depending upon whether you would want to expand anything into December or more in June, we would also apply those types of things so that there'd be another section. Those hours really would be applicable to everything other than the New Year's Eve to January 1. So, I wasn't trying to be, I tried to listen to what the council discussed the last time in order to do some limited time periods, but certainly you make the decision and you could tell me whatever limitations you want to make.
I think the, the five items under limitations, item 4A, make a lot of sense. I think you did a nice job with that, I would support it.
Well, the only comment I have, I think when we were discussing this before, I thought one of the discussions was that we would have the period around the Fourth of July start on the weekend before the Fourth through the weekend after the Fourth, so there was anywhere, would be anywhere from an eight-day to a 14-day period, and, you know, this, this really doesn't follow that pattern. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is that there are, I think I mentioned this the last time this came up, that there are a number of people that have family get-togethers that might be the weekend before or the weekend after, where they might be wanting to celebrate by shooting off fireworks, and if the Fourth of July is on a Monday, the Eighth of July would be on, what, Friday?
Now, I'll tell you that the short answer of this is the state law doesn't let you do it after the July 8th.
Ah, okay, that's a good reason.
And I did that initially, and somebody pointed that out to me, so I had to change from the Friday before to the Sunday after, because we can only do it through July 8th, so I did the maximum afterwards. If you were to expand that, you'd have to go back into June.
No, no, if that's the, I have no problem, if that's a state law cutting it off at the 8th, then that's, I don't think that we really want to go any earlier than the Friday before the Fourth.
And there was discussion about how narrow it should be, and it was kind of a broad sense depending on the council person there, so we just tried to strike in the middle. We're certainly wide open to whatever council would like to do, but the only thing that we had talked about is, is every seven years, if the Fourth is on a Saturday, you would have a, you know, Friday, Saturday through the Eighth, and that would be the shortest standpoint, or in a Friday, et cetera, but otherwise, we just tried to strike kind of in the middle balance and not get too far either way.
I suppose, no.
One question I had, what do we consider the Friday before? If the Fourth is on a Saturday, is the Third the Friday that we would start with?
I believe that's the definition of it, the way we did it.
Play around the calendar a little bit, and like 2020, that's only a six-day window, and next year it'll be 11-day window, so again, it's on an eight-year cycle where it gets very short, or gets very elongated, so.
You know, you could, you could probably do a certain number of days ending on the 8th, and that would be a way of covering more days.
If you're going to list a specific date, like June 30th or July 1, and have a consistent, every year is the same number of days, we're certainly open to that, too. We just wanted a nice gradual, this always hits it, but it does make it kind of a variety of time depending on the year, so we definitely understand that.
I, I think, in my opinion is, I would like to see this opened up on the weekend before the Fourth, so if the Fourth was on a weekend, that it would be the weekend prior to that that it would be opened up, so that there would be always two weekends where you would be able to have fireworks. And I don't know how you would formulate that, I'm not sure, you know, what the opinion is, the rest of the council is on that, but it seems to me that if we're going to allow fireworks, and that's going to be something that we think is a, is a, is a good thing for economically and everything else, that, you know, having just the, the garrities of a calendar say you're only going to have one weekend on these years, and these years you're going to have two weekends, doesn't make any sense. So, I would prefer to have a formula so that there are always at least two weekends that there would be, that would be open.
I think you'd have to actually pick certain days then, and a certain number of days, because if it was on the Monday, then the weekend before would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then through the Eighth, it'd only be about six days. So, unfortunately, there's this scenario, regardless of when it falls in the week, that we will have a situation that is very short or very long, unless you designate a certain number of days on the calendar, and when it is, it is, and that's what makes it very difficult, unless we get really into MIT and start making a formula for this year, for that year, for the next year, if it falls on a Saturday, a Sunday, a Monday, and we can do that, it just makes it very complicated to us.
Well, I, I think.
We can do anything you want.
Professor Bergen is salivating at that idea.
That's what I'm kind of bumping a little bit, because, but honestly, that's what it comes down to, is depending on the day of the week, it is going to greatly determine which weekend it falls, which it doesn't, and we've looked at all these scenarios, and so unless you want a certain number of days on the calendar, that's the only consistent way it would be the same all year long.
So, one thing that I noticed reading my local newspaper is that Denver, Iowa has set up their fireworks ordinance, and it would be nice if we didn't have the case where it was, say, legal there and not legal here, so that we have a whole lot of Waverly people going down to Denver to set off their fireworks. And similarly, I wouldn't really want all the people from Denver deciding that's a great time to go shoot off their fireworks in Waverly. So, it would be nice if we could find some way to coordinate with our other local communities to kind of make sure that our windows of fireworks coincide a little bit.
So, I tried to do that, and that's why I ran a foul of the state law, because theirs is actually a foul, because it says it starts on the weekend before Fourth of July through the weekend after Fourth of July.
Well, I think it's more important to not break the law, but aside from that.
Maybe we can talk to them to join us.
There you go.
I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be as simple as possible, so that you're not getting phone calls like this debating, you know, when is the Saturday before, so I'd almost be in favor of, if we want to make a certain number of days, just saying, June, I'm just picking this, June 30th to July 8th, like every year, or June 29th to July 8th, and sometimes you're going to get two weekends, sometimes you're not.
You're not.
But just as simple as possible for the police officers to enforce, for you guys to, you know, answer questions, so that it's not changing every year, and, you know, if it's a full moon, then it's, you know, whatever, it could get really complicated.
Because then it gets real chaotic, and the moons start coming in.
I mean, you're always going to have four days after the Fourth.
Yep.
Right, so the question is, do we say seven days, 10 days before the Fourth, 14-day window, we'll catch a lot of two weekends?
That's where the discussion starts, is that, is the early part, not the after part?
Again, that's my, my concern with shortening it as much as we are, I'm not really in favor of shortening it this much, simply because with sales starting the first of June, you're going to have people purchasing them and having now into a money-burning stockpile.
Fireworks burning holes.
They're going to have fireworks ready to burn a hole in their pocket that they want to get off, and we run into, you know, do we coordinate, how, you know, we try to coordinate with Denver, with Shaw Rock, with Plainfield, with the county, with Butler County, at some point, it just becomes, you know.
Burdensome.
Burdensome, and I really, I don't, I just foresee the probability of people having them in June and deciding to set them off, and now we've got our police officers having to chase down people in June when they're legal to buy but not legal to shoot in the city, and it just, I don't like how we're superseding some of that and trying to, trying to get a little bit more micromanage on it.
I do like the idea of fixed dates, because I think that will avoid confusion, I suppose the question is.
Again, the current state law has fixed dates, so.
Right, but the first, it's like June 1st or something, right, so I think we'd like to shorten that up, but I do like the idea of fixed dates.
I think, also think we have to be cognizant of those groups that are opposed to things, particularly the veterans.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't think we want it starting on June 1st either.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a question of, do we want two weeks, do we want 10 days? Do we want 40 on either side of the Fourth of July?
I think we pick a date that is always going to include at least one weekend before the Fourth, if that's the 25th of June, or the 23rd of June, or whatever.
You could simply make it the last weekend of June.
I like the idea of having a date, I think that, that's very specific, June 23rd through July 8th, and then people know what date it is, they don't have to worry about, is this the weekend before, the weekend after, does the Friday count? And I don't have a calendar with me, so I would have no idea what.
I'm looking at a calendar.
25th through the 8th would give you both, give you two weekends.
25th would always give you two weekends? I would go with that, then, say the latest date in June that will always give you two weekends.
Is it 14 days?
I'm trusting Pete's internal calendar.
I mean, you have to 14 days to get two weekends guaranteed.
Right.
If you would use 2017, the 25th of June was a Sunday, so that gives you one day out of the weekend, you'd really have to back up to the 24th to get a Saturday.
The 8th is a Saturday this year.
With the 14 days, you have the possibility of two full weekends or a split on either end, right?
The tail end of the last week, and the beginning of the third weekend, or the tail end of the first weekend and the beginning of the third weekend, which, that goes to Rod's point about like, well, what counts as a weekend or whatever, but if you got, if it's dates, doesn't matter.
That's right.
Doesn't matter, if it's dates, doesn't matter, and then you've got the nice little times on here, which I'm, you know, from noon to 10 on the weekdays, and then up to 11 on the weekends, you know, I, I, whatever, I'm just an observer, I think 14 days is plenty, it's two cents.
I think two weeks is a long time, but, you know, I don't think it should be all June, I think a 10-day period is adequate in my opinion, but, but I like the idea of predictable dates, so that people can plan and know when to take their medication. I mean, seriously, if they have PTSD or whatever, two weeks is a long time to have things unpredictably being shot off in your neighborhood, so.
Well, hopefully, it's predictably in the sense of between noon and 10 or 11 p.m., but, well, and I also feel that we can go for 14 days now, and if that is a problem, we can shrink that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
I was going to say, if we go with the 25th as a start, that gives you 10 days before. before the fourth, the fourth, and then four days after, so.
We usually don't see a lot of activity after the fourth. I mean, is that consistent, Rich, do you think? I mean, maybe if it's a weekend, a couple of days, but-
As I say, when you say we don't have-
Yeah.
Any real data.
Evidence.
We have one year of, of doing it, so-
Right.
Of which we didn't have a lot of confidence, so. We're, in my opinion, we're fixing something that isn't necessarily in need of a drastic fix right now.
We're planning ahead. And people, you know, people had a lot of feedback about it, so.
Maybe you make your thoughts known to Bill, and-
Try and draft something for a-
Redraft, redraft the ordinance for a future meeting, and-
May 7th, do you think?
If I'm hearing a compromise, do I do it from the 25th?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then rearrange those points, like you said, so it's very clear.
But I do like the hours of operation. I think those are good. That's definitely good.
That's what I'll do.
Very good, thank you.
We'll try and have it on for the May 7th meeting, then, for a formal.
And I would just suggest, if you really wanted to get this effective before June 1st, you'd have to waive the third reading on the 21st. So I can prepare it, and we can have it prepared for that, kind of a result, if you want to do that on the-
I think that would depend on how many public comments we get.
Right.
Because we don't have a study session in May, so.
So what, what are the legalities, if any, of waiving a third reading? Can we do that if we wish?
You can always do the third reading. Our city ordinance requires you have to have heard at two meetings, so you can't waive the second and third. So you have to have two meetings that, an ordinance is-
You could waive the third.
What you do is you, you suspend the rules and, and move it to the third reading on the second reading, so you do have two different votes on the same night. And actually, you do three votes, because you have to vote to suspend the rules.
We've done it.
Very resourceful, okay.
It's happened before, so.
And as an ordinance, there won't necessarily be a public hearing as part of the first reading.
No, what we just urge, if people do have comments to make, make those to your councilman or come to the meeting. We wouldn't have an official, we'd have the official meeting, that, that we could do the official public hearing on the second reading.
Right.
But by then, I mean, you could make changes on the fly, because this kind of ordinance, when you're really just changing that, that one sub-paragraph, you could make those changes if you needed to on that same night, to do the third reading.
Okay, we're comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number four, discussion of guest council members. Councilman Grenko, I'll let you bring this up.
This isn't directed at Eric specifically.
No, I want to make that very clear. Matter of fact, I'm, I'm glad that Eric is here tonight, because I'm hoping that he will involve himself in this discussion as the guest council person.
When I saw this on the agenda, I thought it was about Eric, but-
Well, I want to thank the mayor for putting this on the agenda. And I know this is probably an item that's not of earth-shattering importance, certainly not as important as how many days we're going to have fireworks around the Fourth of July. But I, I know the guest council program's been around a long time. I think Mayor Rothi probably instituted it back in the 1980s sometime, so it's been here for a long time. But just because things are done for a long time, and they've been done a certain way for a long time, doesn't necessarily mean that it is still fulfilling its original objective. I have a couple of concerns, and I'm just going to list them here, and then I'm, I'm hoping that there's some discussion. If there isn't, then I guess we can all go home early. But it seems to me that there doesn't really seem to be a clear focus of what the program's supposed to accomplish. I've struggled for a long time to figure out just what exactly the role of the guest council person is, or why we have a guest council person. And if it's to encourage input from the community, the guest council person really almost never jumps into the discussion, particularly when there are contentious issues, which I totally understand, I wouldn't either. But most members of the community have no problem coming to the podium and giving us their views, whether they're sitting here in the dais, or whether they're, they're at the podium. If the guest council position is intended to be a special honor, to recognize someone who's made a valued contribution to the community, or is particularly involved in community affairs, then I think that needs to be our standard, when we are selecting guest council people. I have not been, I mean, I don't, I don't know if there is even any kind of policy or standard or anything about selecting guest council people, other than, hey, do you want to be on, be the guest council person for the month? If it's to recruit people to become future council members, or maybe to take an interest in city boards or commissions, then I think we need to be upfront about that, and say, you know, we'd like you to, this is what the purpose of this guest council program is, is to acquaint people with how the city government works. And then that needs to be our focus. But no matter what the reason is, it's difficult just for someone as a guest council person like Eric to pop into a group like this that has such dynamic discussions. And, you know, we've been together now for four months, and I think that we have learned how to function as a group. And it's very difficult for someone just to jump into that situation and really be able to have meaningful input into what we're discussing. And I don't think that's really fair to expect that of someone as a guest council person. I know we tell them that they can, you know, participate in the discussions and, and, and drop their two cents worth in when they want to, but most of them don't. I mean, it's very, very unusual to have someone actually say something. So I, it's concerned me for a long time that if we have a guest council program, what is its purpose? Should we have some standards? Should we have some guidelines as to who we select, or why we want to select various people for a guest council person? Or is this a program that maybe has outlived its usefulness, and we really need to look at eliminating it?
Okay.
Is it, is it doing some sort of harm?
I can see some situations where it might, if there was a guest council person that was invited to be on the council that was not, that was there for a reason, that was there for a nefarious reason. And I, I don't see that happening, you know, but with this council, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen with other councils. There might be a, another backdoor reason why somebody might be doing it. And here again, I'm, I'm not picking on you, Eric, but Eric is a candidate for, for a state office. There might be some discussion about why someone who is an announced candidate for a state office is getting the publicity of being a guest council person on the city council. I'm sure this is going to project him right into winning that vote, but, but, you know, I, I can see some situations where it might be an issue. I don't think it has been yet. But I, my, my problem is, is if we're going to have this program, I would like to know what the standards are, and what the purpose is for the program, so that when I am looking to, to ask someone to be the guest council person, you know, I know what kind of person we're looking for, and what it is that's expected of them, and why they should be sitting here as a guest council person.
I mean, I'll, I'll speak as a former guest council person. And I had to get, I had to get the guest council person in January, the first month we were here. And so when I was looking for someone, I chose somebody who had been asking questions about the process, and, and how was it, you know, to be, to be preparing, to learn how to do this, and, and that's why I picked the person I chose. I think that, for better or for worse, the voters can decide. I don't think I would have run for city council if I hadn't have done the guest council person, but I, I would not say that I knew I was going to run when I did it. I did it because someone asked me to do it, and I thought it would be interesting. And I see it as a way for people to just familiarize themselves with what we do. I don't think that people really understand a lot about how much preparation, if you're going to do this job properly, how much preparation goes into it. And I think it's like, you know, if you start on any board, it takes you all going to ask, you know, if they want to be, if they want to do it, to, to see what goes on, and maybe get more interested, and start watching the meetings, and, because that's the effect it had on me. And so whether, I don't know whether we need to formalize it and, and have a list of, of attributes, or, you know, things we want from prospective people to do it. But like, next month, I think it's a couple of students from the high school, from the AP Government class. I think that's great. We need to do more of that. Or Whartburg students, or whoever. But, but I think it's a valuable program. I, I don't think it should be eliminated.
I've kind of been selecting them the longest, I guess. And I've kind of bounced all over the place with who and what criteria I've used. I know I've used some high school students, I've used some Whartburg students, had the president, student body president from Whartburg one time. We had a couple of students that were on American Legion Boy State and Girl State, came from the high school, so trying to involve, and my, my thought with that was trying to get them a little bit more involved, and trying to connect maybe Whartburg with the city a little bit. When I chose those, I've chosen business people from the community. It's kind of gone all around in terms of what I've chosen. I will admit that it can be challenging at times to try to find somebody, or try to not find, find somebody who isn't a repeat, because we have been doing it a long time.
Right.
And there's a lot of people in the community that have done it. And being on here, I've seen other council members that have chosen, and it's been interesting when some people have been on, whether it's a candidate that's running for an office, and being on on the October before the election, we've had that before, somebody running for a position that-
So you're saying that, that, that has happened before?
That has, right, okay. All right. First-enunciated candidate that's been up there, we've had, I've had individuals that, when I saw their name pop up, I was kind of like, ooh, that's kind of an interesting one, wonder how this is going to, going to pan out, based on where is, what the council's talking about. So I don't know. It's got, it, it's an interesting question. It's an interesting program. I like the involvement and getting people involved to just kind of see behind the scenes a little bit of what we do besides just coming and sitting at council meetings. You get all the packet information and all of that stuff. And I, I know, I remember when I first announced that I was running, I had watched some council meetings, been to one or two, and then once I announced that I was running, all of a sudden, I started getting a packet delivered every week, which I think is a great thing that the city does for, for the candidates, so that they're familiar with all the discussions that go on. But it was an eye-opener right then to go, wow, this is, this isn't just, you know, what's on the agenda and talking about. There's a lot of background stuff that we get, to really get, dig into some of this. So, you know, I think that's, that's one motivation of the program. One is just the involvement and interest. Kind of each council member's own criteria, so.
I mean, I would say that, for me, being a guest council member was a huge factor in choosing to run. It was something I was considering. Tim invited me, and it gave me some great experiences to what was going on, what the commitment would be required. I mean, okay, for one month, I have to go to all those meetings, so does it fit into my schedule? Where does it fit in? Those sorts of things. I will admit that I was, I was not someone who was good at keeping his mouth shut. I, I don't know if I just got the luck of interesting meetings that I was at.
You had a couple of interesting topics that month.
I did. Well, it, it was interesting when, when I was addressed from the podium, too. It was hard to keep my mouth shut there, too. So, but I mean, I think it, as so many other people have said, it's a great way for people in the community to see what happens and get involved. I know with Eric, because I know he's running, I thought, boy, it would be nice to have someone in the State House who knows something about what city councils do, and what are the issues that are, you know, we're worrying, worrying about. So that was kind of, you know, very self-serving on my part. But, you know, that was kind of, now, as other people said, I've got a list of people who have been peppering me with questions, and, and that's going to be my go-to list for guest council people. People who want to know a little, yeah, that's not a war, that's not trying to discourage people from asking me questions. Sorry, don't want that coming out the wrong way. Please send me your questions and comments.
It's got real quiet.
But it certainly is the case, is, you know, finding those people who want to learn more about what's going on in the cities. I think, I think that's a great opportunity for guest council people.
I think these are all great comments. And I have to say, I, with all due respect to Rod, I really think this is a good program. When I came to Waverly and became aware that the city had a guest council person on city council, I thought, this is a pretty progressive town. Not every city would try something like that. I was impressed by it. I, when I ask people to think about being guest council person, what I usually say to them is, I want you to think about it because it will help you to appreciate what we do, and I wouldn't ask you if you didn't care about the city. If you don't care about the city, you probably shouldn't think about it. But people I ask generally do care about it, or I wouldn't have asked them in the first place. In, in a different realm, I've talked to people who have said, in, in church congregations, you know, we have these, these groups, the Lutherans call them church council, I don't know what everybody else calls them. And it's been an interesting experience, sometimes people who whine a lot about what the, what that group does. Oftentimes, if you put them on there, they say, well, I guess I didn't appreciate what's going on. And then they become really good supporters after that. So maybe it's, it's worthwhile. I just enjoy what we're doing, because by some strange accident, I get to sit by the guest council person. And I've been inclined to, I've been thinking of getting a little card made that I can shove over that says, say something. Because frankly, I think it's great when the visiting council person has an opinion and drops it in. They don't get to vote, but I think it really enriches the conversation. And so I guess, I did have, I do have one negative, and that is that we have, in, in at least one occasion, we had a guest council person who was not, only not from Waverly, they weren't even from the county, and I thought that was really inappropriate. And if we wanted to have a guideline, I would say somebody from Waverly. Other than that, I think, I wouldn't worry about it.
Ben, do you have a thought on this process?
Yeah, you know, when you see things pop up on the agenda, it does make you think. And as I look back on the program, yes, sometimes it's difficult to find somebody that's interested. Yes, there have been times, I think, the guest council person ends up being a surrogate for personal agendas. But what I see, most of the time, there's a little survey that they, they are invited to fill out, and when you read those, the, the things that stick out to me was, boy, this is a tough job. I didn't realize there was all this material you guys need to know, the broad scope of things you need to know, reinforces that they appreciate what we do. So, again, I think just getting another person in the community to understand what this group is all about, I think, helps. I know I've invited folks that I thought would be good on some commissions, and some of them have taken that opportunity. I know I've invited an outsider. I know when we were going through the rental housing code, it just happened to coincide with one of mine, and I picked a Realtor who doesn't necessarily live in Bremer, or Bremer County, or the city of Waverly, but has a very strong presence here. So I've tried to, when it's my turn, look at what the topics are coming up, and see if I can find somebody that can be somewhat of an expert in that, or a valued opinion. And when I can't, I said, you know, Exchange Club does a student of the month every month, and I'm always impressed with that. So next month is my turn. It's like, I'm, I'm sure seniors are not busy in the month of May, so why not invite them to the city council meeting? And working with the individual at the high school, she had three or four that was interested in it. So again, it, yeah, I think it's good to, to talk about it. I think all the things that Ron kind of alluded to, the, broached the subject, I think we all need to be conscious of. Can we control who the other council people invite? No, but it's only once every eight months, so.
Right.
I don't think one council person can skew things too bad by who they invite. And, yeah, I'd be in favor of continuing it. Again, putting parameters around it, I think is pretty tough. Again, putting parameters around it, I think is pretty tough. We all have invited folks for a pretty broad scope of reasons and that type of thing. So to try to narrow that down, I think we may run the risk of missing some opportunities. How's that for talking around the whole topic?
I have to say, I agree with both Mike and Dan in that it would be nice to have people from Waverly, but there's also good reasons to have someone who's not from Waverly.
I did have a former guest council person say to me, I was petrified that, realizing what you guys are dealing with and all of the paper and all of this, that if I did open my mouth, I'd probably say something really stupid. And I said, well, you shouldn't worry about it because we do it all the time. So, yeah, I think it's worth the, actually worth the risk to have a person on here who doesn't really know what we're doing. I think they know a lot more when they leave than when they came in, and I think that's worth a lot. They can be ambassadors for the city when they go back to their normal business.
Well, and it's about creating an atmosphere where people can ask questions and, you know, not be ridiculed or, you know.
Okay. Oh, I'll, since this is about encouraging, like, the guest council person to speak, I'll, I'll, I think Rod, you know, raises a good point, because when Brian did ask me, I'm like, well, I'm like, you know, I don't know, sure, yeah, I'll do it. Like, that's, I think that, like, starting from what Ann and a lot of other people have said, if you're looking for a reason, I think that, like, the civic engagement is just really wonderful. It's just a really great kind of thing. I mean, it's sort of like, when you're here and you have, not everybody's like Phil, who faithfully comes to every council meeting. I mean, you usually come when you have business before it, or, and most of the times, you know, you're just like, you know, it's not like, kind of on your radar. But if you have those, like, three weeks a month where, like, I'm going to go and participate to the extent that I feel comfortable participating. And I really think that, you know, if you're an ambassador out there for Waverly, yeah, like, I think that one of the greatest programs in the entire city was Citizens Police Academy. And I signed up for that and Rich and, and everybody at the police department is fantastic with that. And you walk away with it, again, like, you're carrying out there into the public, like, wow, like, I know so much more now about everything, you know, all of the services and everything that's involved with, or certainly a great deal more of everything that's involved with policing in the city of Waverly. And so, I mean, I think that this is, you know, it's, you know, it's a similar kind of outreach. And, I mean, I suppose, I certainly don't think that my participation has been nefarious on any, on any level or anything like that. And although, like, there is a risk, I mean, I suppose, like, you know, that there is a risk for that. But I think that, like, overall, just the comments from, that everybody has kind of made about, you know, that there's this who's who of who's active in the community. And, you know, it really, I think, I think it's a really good form of outreach. So, I mean, I've, you know, I've had a great, a great time, you know, I don't, you know, being here for these last three meetings. And, you know, and just walk away, like, again, like, just very impressed, like, having a fuller realization of all the preparation that goes into, you know, everything. And, yeah, and so for that reason, you know, it's been valuable for me. I mean, I hope that it's valuable, and I can see that the value that, you know, that it would have for the more people that are involved. But at the same time, I think it's great that you call a question, too. Like, when you've ever had a long-running thing, you should, like, well, let's reexamine the purpose behind it. You know, that's worthwhile. And so, I think everybody has had, you know, some really good comments. And, you know, as long as somebody's there to raise a question, like, you know, why we're doing this, that's valuable, too. So, anyway, I've had a great time. And, you know, I found the experience really valuable.
I appreciate the discussion, everyone. I was not intending that we eliminate the guest council program. What I was struggling with was just what its purpose was and what parameters we would be looking at for the kind of people that we wanted to have as a guest council person. And I really appreciate the discussion that was here tonight. I feel much more comfortable with it now, going forward.
I appreciate Rod that you brought it up and we, because we had a little discussion about it at coffee, over coffee one day. And I certainly appreciate the input from all of you council people. And great discussion.
Can I add, Carla, can you send out the list again? When it's our month, please.
Yeah, right. And I do want to say that I appreciate Eric being with us this month. I knew he was taking it seriously, especially tonight when he sat down, the first thing he did was rolled up his sleeves.
Moving on, reports from boards and commissions. Historic Preservation Commission minutes, February 26, 2018. Any comments, questions received into record? Airport Commission minutes, March 8, 2018. Comments, questions received into record? Library Board of Trustees minutes, March 13, 2018. Received into record? Moving on, staff comments.
Good evening. Just a reminder, and we won't see you beforehand, but May 5 is the annual Art Walk event. We have at least 30 vendors right now and six food vendors, a couple musical acts and dance teams going to be performing. One of the musical acts is a mariachi band. It's May 5, so that is Cinco de Mayo. So they'll be walking up and down the walkway, playing their mariachi music. Should be pretty cool.
Anyone else from staff?
Special collection week, so we'll waive the normal curbside collection fee for this week, but you do need to pay the disposal, get signed up at City Hall. Popular items seem to be like gas grills, old plywood desks, I guess. Great opportunity to get rid of that old couch, recliner, mattress, lawnmower, bikes, screen doors. Be inventive, give us a call, we'll put a price on it. So, that runs through Friday of this week. Through, for the next two weeks, we have the curbside collection of yard waste, including brush. So, biodegradable bags, you know, if you need to rake out your landscaping, get the fall leaves, the blue in there raked out now. Think the threat of frost is over with, hopefully, so do a little yard cleaning. Again, biodegradable bags are great, but this is also the time of year that we will collect, like, if you trim your hedge or prune your trees or picking up sticks in the yard. I know that we've had some strong wind taking some limbs down. Get them cut up and bundled into kind of a manageable size. You know, our guys are pretty good, but, you know, 50 pounds throwing it into a dump truck, that's about the limit of what we'll take. So, like, see that stuff bundled into four or five-foot lengths and manageable so that we can throw it up under the dump truck. That's for the next two weeks. Three new employees started in public services today. We had three retirements that occurred in late March. And we've got new employees hired after we kind of shuffled our employees around because they internally applied for some different positions. Turns out that the three vacancies all fell within the solid waste department. So, five-person staff, three are new. We are doubling up, training them. The guys that took other positions are also coming back to assist with the training as needed. But please be patient with us. If you think we've missed your garbage, simply give us a call. And it'll take several months for them to learn the routes, because it's not just residential, it's also commercial garbage collection and curbside recycling programs, along with special collections and yard waste.
Hey, Will?
Just remember that scheduled for next week's start on Monday, the construction, reconstruction starts on the west side also. The railroad tracks will be, the Bremer Avenue will be closed at the railroad tracks for a month. So go north or south. If you go north, don't go on Wilson Avenue, that'll be closed also as they work on both crossings. So to go, you have to go on Fifth Avenue to go around that on the north side. Just be patient, plan ahead, try to do a different route if you can. You'll be all right.
Also, May 5, you will see one of the largest high school soccer tournaments in the state, if not the largest, here in Waverly. If you have a chance to go out and witness that, it is something to see. That complex, it really shines, you get to see everybody in the fields, anywhere from 16 to 20 to 30 teams, depending on who shows up, JV as well. So it is quite a demonstration of what happens out there. Probably the most use it'll see in a couple of days. It's the boys', it's May 5 weekend, I believe it's the girls' after. So you'll have back-to-back weekends of some incredible soccer in the state of Iowa coming down to Waverly. So, I think it's all we have, sir.
That soccer complex ranks high in the state.
Absolutely.
For condition and usefulness and everything, so, very good. Thank you. Council comments.
Just kind of piggybacking, I caught the mayor in Mike's K-way interview. I think Mike did a good job of highlighting, we'd really like to move people that do a lot of recycling to the city's supplied containers versus the multiple totes, those type of things. So, hopefully folks will keep that in mind. If crude, get them loaded, those type of things. And the other thing, just being around town, warm weather, kids are out bicycling, skateboarding, it's already congested, so slow down a little bit, be watchful of walkers and kids as they move around. It's that time of year again.
Mike, anything?
Just something I've observed, folks that are driving east on Bremer, crossing the bridge, coming into east side of the river, the lanes at First Avenue or First Street are painted with arrows, and it's important to watch the arrows. I've seen people trying to go the wrong way from the wrong lane. There is a potential for whacking somebody if you're in the wrong lane when you're at that intersection. So, something to watch.
Some of the markings that were there got scraped off with snow removal, so I know there's a meeting Wednesday. Need to reiterate to get those remarked. Anyone else from the council?
I have a couple of comments, Your Honor. First of all, I want to compliment Mike's staff there in the solid waste disposal group. I was following a garbage truck this morning into work, and the claw came out and picked up the garbage can, dumped it out and put it back, and it started to fall over. The guy worked three or four times to get that garbage can to stand up. Most other cities would have tried it once, fell over, the heck with it, and would have driven away. I think it's a real compliment to the character and the dedication that the city staff have, not just solid waste, but all the way through the city, that they want to do things right and do things the right way and they're very conscientious. So, congratulations to your staff on that. I have no idea who was driving that truck, but he just did a bang-up job as far as I'm concerned. The other thing that I want to bring up here is a matter that's probably a little tender for all of us here on the council for some obvious reasons. But I have very frequently been asked this, and I think I would like to bring this up Something that has been in the forefront of the city for the last several years is the Third Street Bridge. I've been asked constantly, when is the council going to discuss the future of the Third Street Bridge? And I said, well, soon, we'll be talking about it soon, we have to wait for the budget, et cetera, et cetera. I think we owe it to the citizens a way, really, to at least have a, continue our discussion about that. I know it's painful, I know we've been through this for years and years and years, but I think that the citizens deserve to know that we at least have a plan moving forward, even though we may not be able to do anything in the immediate future. So hopefully, at some session, study session or elsewhere, we can have some discussion about where we would like to see that moving and what kind of timeframe we may be looking at. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All I've got to say is, how about that Maddie Poppy?
Yep. Tim?
Very good. Mayor's comments, Rod, in response to your question about the Green Bridge. I thought I had it figured out, but everybody tells me that it's illegal, so.
So we don't want to do it.
So, we're back.
Does it involve fireworks?
Does it involve TNT?
We're back for the drawing board. I mean, I'd encourage us all to buy a lot of Powerball tickets and maybe think about contributing $3 million to the city, and it would be no problem. But, no, it's, I get asked the same question frequently about.
You're my first choice.
My response is always, until we can find some money in the budget, it's pretty much of an issue that's just there. And we'll continue to ask questions about it. Jennifer, you and I both received some communication this morning for an award that the city got, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you expound on that? I don't know if it's been done before, but I'm going to ask you to do it this time, so.
Well, it's happened for, I wish I knew the amount of years, at least 10 years. It's GFOA, it's our association for finance directors. And the comprehensive annual financial report that we do is involved in that. That's a big part of this. And you have to meet certain qualifications, certain certifications, and we are awarded again this year with the help of everybody in the city.
Very good, thank you. I received a letter from some company in Chicago and had no idea what it was, but I took it to Jennifer because it said it had to do with finance. And she had received the plaque or the folder of the award this morning also, so thank you. Eric, thank you again for your commitment and service to the community, and if you have some parting words?
Oh, no, thank you very much. It's been illuminating, and again, I think it's a valuable, a valuable experience for me personally, and, you know, I think for, you know, anybody else that is, you know, going to be invited to serve in the future, so.
Very good. I have no other comments, so I would entertain the motion for adjournment.
Who's adjourned?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, yes?
Yes.
Gary, thank you.